Good afternoon and welcome to the City Council meeting for the City of International Falls for Monday, July 16, 2018. I would ask all to please arise and pledge allegiance to the flag.
(Inaudible) 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 Thank you. Ask the city administrator to note the roll call with Counselor Pearson absent. Move to the agenda with the addition of the minutes of the hearing that we had on July 2nd, and then under New Business, item number 9A, a consideration of a change of hours in the Administrative Department for the summer. Counsel's pleasure with the agenda and the additions. Move. Motion by Counselor Briggs. And by Counselor Jacksaw to approve the agenda with the additions. Discussion. Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion is carried. Agenda is approved with the additions, thank you. Move to the approval of the minutes, minutes of the July 2nd, 2018 City Council Home Rule Charter public hearing and input meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Jacksaw.
Second.
Second by Counselor Briggs. Discussion. Question?
Aye.
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 I would vote yes, motion is carried, minutes for the hearing is approved, thank you. Item number 2, under the approval of minutes, is the minutes of the July 2nd, 2018 regular City Council meeting.
I'll move.
Motion by Counselor Jacksaw to approve.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Drowba. Discussion. Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion is carried, minutes are approved, thank you. Move to the resolution, authorizing transfers and payment of claims and the payment of accounts payable. Under the transfers, we have to fund number 101, the general fund, from the Water and Sewer Fund, $9,951.67, to the permanent improvement fund from the Water and Sewer Fund, $62,500, and to fund number 403, the reserve for capital outlay from the Water and Sewer Fund, $25,760.42. Under the accounts payable claims, City of International Falls, $698,496.26. Airport commission claims of $6,531.56. Airport commission terminal project Phase 1 claims, $3,500. Library board claims of $5,533.48. Your pleasure with the resolution. Motion by Counselor Briggs to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Second by Counselor Drowba. Question on the payment of claims, the transfers, or the resolution? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion is carried, resolution is adopted, approving the transfers and the payment of claims, thank you. For anyone in the audience that wishes to address the council at this time that's not on the agenda? Seeing no one, any other opportunity at the end of the meeting for audience participation? We'll move to the public hearing and have the second reading and approval of ordinance number of the fifth series, an ordinance to amend the Home Rule Charter in sections 108 through 110, 111, 113 through 117, 121 through 123, and 134, to be effective 90 days after publication. Counsel's pleasure with the ordinance.
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Drowba.
Second.
Second by Counselor Briggs. Discussion. Please.
I realize that we have one member of this council that voted against this last time. It has to be a unanimous vote to move forward without having to go to the election. I understand your concerns, Counselor Jacksaw, and what you're saying and what you've said in the last meeting is accurate. There is things that definitely need to be changed moving forward. However, I'm willing to work with you, members of the council, and with the Charter Committee to make the changes that you're suggesting moving forward. But what my concern is, is there's nothing in this document that we're changing that is wrong. There's nothing in there that is horrible. There are simple changes, it should have been updated more, and I do agree with you on that. I think we need to pass this unanimously today. There's no reason to send this to, because it's not going to get sent back to the Charter Commission. It's going to get sent down to, or to the election. So I would highly urge all the members of this committee to accept the changes as presented, and let's work forward and try to get better changes for the next time it comes to council. There's no reason to kick this towards the election. So that's my two cents on it. I do agree that it could be better, and I think that's what we need to work for moving forward. But today, this is what we have, and I think we should accept the changes.
I would endorse what Counselor Drowba has said. I would ask the Chair of the Charter Commission, which is a 15-member commission of citizens of the city, who, and that's Chief Manasa, as Chair, and another member here, Roger Jackson, of the Charter Commission. The Charter Commission is continually reviewing the charter, going through every section and updating, is that a fair statement, Chairman Manasa?
Yes, that's correct. Unless there are new items that get brought before us, our normal actions are to go through the charter. Compared to the whole, then those additions were brought forward to the council, which is what happened. Coincidentally, a new issue come before us that dealt with, I believe it was sections 108 and 1 through 110, I believe is what, in reference to Counselor Jacksaw's questioning.
About 100, I don't have it in front of me.
Help officer.
Oh, okay.
We had already approved specific changes to be brought forward to council before your questions encountered, so I kind of agree with those changes, and then we can address as we're currently doing.
All right, you don't have to argue with me anymore.
Counselor Drowba.
I just, I think that one of the things that is a concern of members of the council and Counselor Jacksaw is updating the pronouns and just making it a more 21st century document. It has a lot of old language in it, I think that we'd like to have cleared up. I think that that was one of the concerns, along with the help officer, so I think that was one of the things that you definitely want to.
And I think you're very reasonable, I appreciate your argument, Counselor Drowba, and I will vote yes, by the way, based on what you said. But I do want to add, there is, you know, one of the things we should be looking at in the charter is the ability to bond. If we had it in the charter, it would simplify financial management for the city. And we have to have it in the charter to avoid a referendum. So when you, I'm just going to make a public statement here, so that is a topic I'd like to see considered at the Charter Commission. And that he, she changed to they, you know.
Right, and I think just for clarity too on that, Counselor Jacksaw, I've been on the Charter Commission, which is either four or five years, I'm trying to remember now, the changes that's been brought to the council in that timeframe, so that's how long it's taken to go through the entire document. So some of these changes outlined on this ordinance do go back several years. At those discussions at the charter level of whether we do this yearly, wherever we're at, if we have three or four changes annually, we've looked into changing our system, so we don't.
Yeah, I appreciate the hard work that you all do, and it's all volunteer, so, but can we get that issue of bonding on the agenda?
I will make a note of that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I failed to point out the former Chair of the Charter Commission, Kelly Myers, is here also, so, number of members. The bonding issue, I guess I would have a different opinion. I think the, I think if we're going to put the city and its citizens in bonded indebtedness, I think that the citizens ought to have an opportunity to help us decide that issue. I think we can propose bond issues, but I think the citizens should make the final decision whether or not they're going to raise their taxes.
That's an argument that we can have, but I think it bears more than just a few comments at the City Council level. I think it needs to be looked at more closely, because there are a lot of cities that do that.
Okay, further discussion on the second reading and approval of the ordinance? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
Aye.
I would vote yes, motion is carried, second reading and approval of the ordinance to amend the Home Rule Charter in those sections is approved, thank you. Item number 2, under Public Hearing, is the second reading and approval of the ordinance of the fifth series on repealing the ordinance number 1.25 and number .71, second series in amending the established rules governing the special police benefit fund. Counsel's pleasure with the second reading. Motion by Counselor Briggs.
Second.
Second by Counselor Jacksaw. Hearing none, question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I would vote yes, motion is carried, second reading is approved, thank you. Item number 3, under the Public Hearings, is the first reading of the ordinance ordering annexation into the City of International Falls, those city-owned properties and private property owners consenting to annexation. Counsel's pleasure with the first reading. Please, City Administrator.
Counsel's information, we've prepared three maps that identify where the city owns property, and where that property is in sole ownership by the city and not by a private party or not jointly with another public entity. And there's two processes that need to be followed to annex properties, and one is to allow us to do that by ordinance. In my conversations with the city attorney, it became known to us that in order for the city to proceed with the, for the annexation of the city-owned properties in the community, those properties have to be contiguous to the existing. And you can see from the three maps that we provided that each of them have a parcel or parcels that are not contiguous to the city. So I think we would like to, I'd like to have some time to coordinate with the city attorney about reevaluating the process that we need to proceed with, initiate. We will probably have to follow a different process than just have the City Council approve an ordinance after first and second reading to annexate our portions of them that are not contiguous to the.
We have to do it continuously.
Follow the ordinance process, I believe that's correct.
The Attorney.
I would agree with Mr. Anderson. There are, in putting together the exhibit that identified the legal descriptions of those parcels that we wanted to annex by ordinance, there are several that appear they would not qualify. The term that's used in the legislation is "abut," which means contiguous. So we can still proceed with those, but I think if we take this up, we'll have a better legal description of those involved at the next City Council meeting and annex those. The other parcels can be annexed, but it's a different process, requires public hearing, requires some notice to surrounding landowners and those types of things. So we always envisioned that there would be two processes, you know, moving forward, but we've thought we can include more in the first process that didn't require public hearing than it turned out to be possible. So if we just delay this for a couple of weeks, we should be able to move forward and perhaps on both at the same time. But one will require a public hearing.
Does it require anything else but a public hearing?
Notice, there'd need to be notice to other property owners.
Any approval by any God or anything? No?
Well, even with our ordinance, it all, you know, goes out of the state, and it doesn't become effective until the state approves it, and then the county, there may not be any tax ramifications, because if all of these were tax exempt and no property taxes being paid, but typically if there's a private property owner that's being annexed into the city, the county in terms of taxes would share the taxes, because then it would be tax exempt, or the city would.
County has to have some level of say-so on this as well.
They would, they don't have a say, necessarily have a say-so on whether or not the annexation can take place. They would have some say-so, we would negotiate or calculate tax ramifications of the annex.
I understand the recommendation of the City Administrator and City Attorney is to withdraw the first reading of this ordinance this evening.
Right.
Any objections from the council?
I'm also.
All right.
Right.
Have it on the agenda for the August 6th meeting. Thank you. Move to Old Business, remove from the table, the, consider the local contract assistance or agreement with CGI Communications to prepare an approved no-cost community video program available for viewers, access on the city's website, and authorized signatures.
I would move to remove it from the table.
Motion by Counselor Drowba to remove this item from the table.
Second.
Second by Counselor Jacksaw. Question? On the motion to remove? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
I would vote yes, motion is carried, and this item is removed from the table and before us for consideration.
Counselor, Counselor Drowba. I would make a motion to respectfully decline the offer from CGI Communications.
I respect that.
Okay, we have motion by Counselor Drowba to, second by Counselor Jacksaw, to decline the agreement with CGI to prepare an approved no-cost video program. After your motion, I guess my question is, do we need to have a motion to decline? I'm not sure that, we didn't have a formal declination of it, but we have some other things, something else to offer, I think that that could be in order too, but I accepted your motion, so we can certainly discuss that.
Okay.
The purpose of declining.
Mr. Mayor, rest of the council, I'm very happy to announce that Counselor Jacksaw and I have been able to meet with a handful of people in our community to see if there was something we could do in our community similar to what CGI was offering. And with that being said, we spoke with Danielle Shimmerhorn, Diane Adams, Sarah Smith, Ted Saxton, one of his employees from Small Town Tech, Jake, and Darcy Sullivan, myself and Counselor Jacksaw, and we kind of went through what CGI offers, and I'm going to be honest, they're a very good company and they've done some really great things, but when we actually showed this group of our local specialists what they do, they were very quick to point out that the quality of video and the quality of what was being produced for these other cities, North Branch and Chan Hassen, is lower quality than what they would be able to offer here in our community if they were to do it. We went through, great discussion on, I'll just be clear, we didn't get, what Counselor Jacksaw and I were proposing did not come out of that meeting when we talked to everybody. They saw the video that was presented, and then they started looking at how they presented it with the city, and they decided, they thought, as business owners and people in our community, that there was really no value to any of our local businesses to advertise on that. They thought that one of the best things that we could do would be to decline this offer and move forward with something else, because then those advertising dollars don't leave our community to go to New York where this corporation is based out of. It would stay in the businesses themselves, because we have so many local places that already do the online marketing. For example, the Chamber of Commerce, the CVB, Voyage Forward is now getting into it. So we have a lot of people that are already doing these online marketing for people that are outside of our community. And then it kind of took a different turn, and they said, you know what, we can't do four videos for free for the city, but we can do one really good video. And we talked about it, and I said, we'll bring this to the council on Monday, and we'll see what the city would like, if they chose to do it, what the city would like for content of the video. KCCTV has lots of content that we could use to showcase what we do as our community. We also have other people that were in our group that would be able to write, we would have people that would be able to video, and so they said they'd make one video for us for free, as long as we don't offer advertising on our city website. Secondly, they said, you know, we have a lot of really good stuff happening in our area, not necessarily specifically International Falls, but in our area, the Highway 53 project, the Cantilever project out in Rainier, and we really are starting to come out of this funk that we've been in for a while. They said in 2020, they would be willing to do another video, or a couple of videos to really showcase where our community is, and over the next 18 months, take high-quality video equipment out and videotape stuff specifically geared towards a real outreach to other communities of International Falls, moving forward. So the reason that I made the motion today to decline this is because we can do it better here in International Falls, we have great people that can do it, and they believe in our community and they're willing to do it for free here.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I'd like to just thank Counselor Drowba for taking part in this. He chaired the meeting, analyzed the different functions, he had a chart of the different functions that need to be addressed. One of the issues that also, if I can add to what you said, I think it was Danielle that said, we have a lot of this activity going on, but we lack focus and coordination. And this, you know, now that we've met and we have an idea of putting something together, this will allow us to maybe pull all those parties together and get better focus attraction because of it. So this CGI proposal is actually a great thing, because it created this discussion about how we can do what we're doing now better. Anyway, thank you so much.
If I heard you correctly, Counselor Drowba, you're talking about doing a video now, and then another video in 2020, and would that be at a cost to the city then?
No, the idea, as I understood it through our conversation, is that that too would be a free video that we would be able to build over the next 18 months. Knowing that we're going to do a video, when we do specific events, we can get out there and have good quality video, because right now, a lot of the stuff that we're doing is just to go up very quick on the internet or to go on KCCTV, but we don't have a lot of time and effort put into staging and making sure that we have the best quality presentation of our community. So that's, in 2020, I think that would be something that the group would be willing to do for free as well in the future. Is that correct? Is that what you understood of that too?
That's correct. And, you know, the thing about the CGI proposal is it's really static. They do this one time, they come in. I looked at what they add on the, or what they did for the nonprofits, and it was really sad, at the Chan Hassen website. Having an organization in town that is coalescing around this, you can have changes to the programming more organic and current, so.
And the last thing that concerns me on CGI, not necessarily that we're going to do it, that we can do it as a community, but one of the things that really, really concerns me of CGI is they ask for a letterhead of the city, so they're actually sending out their marketing to local businesses as the City of International Falls. And I don't think that that's right for our letterhead to be going out to a business to represent us.
I think only, my only point that I would make, and it's certainly not against anything with regard to the local group, I think CGI was prepared, as I understood it, with the City Administrator, that we would have an opportunity to highlight whatever we wanted in the community and assist in writing the script.
Same. We would have three opportunities to revise and edit the script, and they would have some professional assistance in preparing the original. That is correct.
You'll have ample opportunity with this group. And the, and that brings us to this, that we need to sit down and have a meeting as to what would be expected with the city.
We want to provide for content.
Yeah, it's hard to do a proposal until you talk to expectations.
So who is the proposal, would the proposal be from?
I think KCCTV is going to be leading, because we already have the business manager, we have the nonprofit status, you know, we can filter it through that initially, anyway. I, it doesn't have to be.
As of right now, I think KCCTV is going to be one of the people that take the lead on this, but I think you can lean towards myself and Counselor Jacksaw to take the lead to move forward with this group.
All right, further discussion on the motion then to decline the offer from CGI Communications Hearing no further discussion, question?
Aye.
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 Oh, yes, motion is carried, and decline that offer from CGI. Thank you. Move to New Business, and item number 1 is to approve the election judges for the August 14 primary election and the November 6th general election. Motion by Counselor Briggs to approve.
Second.
Second by Counselor Jacksaw. Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion is carried. Election judges as presented are approved, thank you. Item number 2 is a resolution approving the application for a 1-4 day temporary on-sale liquor license for the Elks Lodge, number 1599, for August 18, 2017, for the annual corn and brat feed. So moved. Motion by Counselor Drowba.
Second.
Second by Counselor Jacksaw to adopt the resolution. Discussion. Question?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion is carried, resolution is adopted, and temporary on-sale liquor license is approved, thank you. Item number 3, under New Business, is to authorize the city attorney to proceed with blatant enforcement at the following properties. Kim R. Creed, 516 Ninth Street, parcel number 92-007-71200, the Tyler Kim R. Creed, 516 Ninth Street, parcel number 92-007-71200, the Tyler Lee Stenberg property at 2031 Third Avenue, and the Tony Puller 301 Memorial Drive. Counsel's pleasure with having the city attorney proceed with blatant enforcement on those properties. Motion by Councilor Briggs.
Second.
Second by Councilor Jacksaw. Discussion. Chief for building inspector, do you have any comments at this time?
One is actually third.
Thank you.
One thing I noticed was the water was shut off on the same day on two of the properties. Is that accurate?
It's probably just because of the building site.
We've received numerous complaints from neighbors.
Yeah, I have several one of these. It's been quite some time.
Thank you. Further discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 And I would vote yes, motion is carried and the city attorney is authorized to move forward with enforcement. Thank you. Item number four under new business is to consider a subscription agreement with Alad Tech for the online employee scheduling program with the optional time clock system for the ambulance service at the cost of $2,495 annually, plus $1 per user per month, estimated at $37 per month, or $444 per year, and that we would terminate the firehouse program at the year end. Counsel's consideration to that?
I'll move.
Motion by Councilor Jacksaw.
Second.
Second by Councilor Briggs. Discussion. Chief, did you have any comments you wanted to make? Chief Manasa?
We've been getting by demo for the last few weeks and it's been working. Hard to explain on paper other than. Some issues in the beginning, which we expected and.
Thank you. Questions for the chief?
Good going.
Further discussion?
Aye.
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 I would vote yes, and that's approval of the agreement with Alad Tech for the online employee scheduling program. Item number five under new business is to approve the appointment of Kevin Zook and Miranda Shaleen as E M Ts pending background check and normal hiring procedures.
Move.
Motion by Councilor Briggs.
Second.
Second by Councilor Jacksaw. Discussion. Question?
Aye.
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 Yes, thank you. And that would be the approval of the appointment of those two for the E M Ts. Authorized number six is to authorize a letter of support for the Kutaska Community Action Backus Community Center, submittal for Minnesota Housing Partnership Technical Assistance to rehabilitate the A B building.
Move.
Motion by Councilor Jacksaw.
Second.
Second by Councilor Briggs. Discussion.
I thought I saw that Isaac Meyer said this needed to be in by Friday, the 13th.
Yes, I think that was correct. City Administrator?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor, that is correct. I had a conversation with Isaac and he had no problem with, we wanted to, I think, counsel, he was fine submitting the application tomorrow, or I'm sorry, the letter of support tomorrow.
Further questions or discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 Yes, motion is carried and letter of support is authorized. Thank you. Item number seven is also a request for a letter of support from the Kushing County as they make application for federal grant funds to construct a potential overpass at County Road 24, the Van Lynn Road and the Canadian National Railroad tracks and/or extending the east end of County Road 24 to Trunk Highway 11 near the Rainy Lake One Stop.
So moved.
Motion by Councilor Jacksaw.
Second.
Second by Councilor Droba. Discussion.
There were some question.
Councilor Droba?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I contacted a handful of people that live past the railroad tracks specifically about this issue and it seems like a vast majority of the people there want the overpass and some of them would like to see the road extended. So I think if we're going to offer support, a letter of support, I think one of the concerns we should be is that the overpass would be the first thing that is built if we were to put something together. And the reason for that is safety concerns. I spoke with the police chief, or I'm sorry, the fire chief today specifically about emergency services heading out that way. And right now, there's sometimes where we don't know if the train is going to be there or not. And if there's an overpass, you can go over the train, but extending out the road, you wouldn't know if the train is there or not. So I think the big concern that the people that are on the Van Lynn Road that are past the railroad tracks have is to make sure the first thing that gets built would be an overpass. And then if money allows or if it's going to be built out to make, to put that road. And I don't see what plan they have to, where, it says it would come out at Highway 11, but is that using an existing road or is that going to specifically rebuild out 11 all the way there? Or I'm sorry, not 11, 24, 24 all the way there? Are they going to use a existing road that, a handful of the residents that live on that area were concerned on that too, on how they build that road to go out there? Because some of them would go past their house and if you extend out 11, again, 24, you extend out 24 to 11, that seemed to be the better option, but there is closer roads that could bring you out there. So from the conversations I've had with people that live out on 24, is the first thing that we should be looking at for safety and for the people, there would be an overpass. And if there's enough money and they're able to do it to build the road second.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Jackson?
I talked to my commissioner today and he said that the cost benefit analysis points to an overpass. They have not made any decision as to which route. All they're really asking for is grant support, to get funding, not, they're not, they haven't chosen what option. I mean, at county board, they've taken no official action at all.
Mr. Mayor? Administrator?
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel. I would agree with Counselor Jacksaw. I think that the staff is in a formative stages, conceptual stages, and as you pointed out, they're looking at the overpass as well as a connecting road from County Road 24 all the way to Highway 11. I think everything is conceptual at this point. There's a number of public meetings that would be necessary to actually go forward with the applications and the actual alignment, land acquisition. There's a, you know, it would be a relatively expensive and a major project. And as Counselor Jacksaw pointed out, this is to just get authorization and support for their application for federal grant funds through, I believe, the highway engineer called it the build program. But they're federal grant dollars and anytime we can get outside funding assistance to do projects, that's absolutely essential and helpful in reducing our local costs. The county's going to have to go through an exercise where they get a lot more public input and the city, the citizens are going to have an opportunity to provide that input. So, at this point, and the idea is to try and get support for the federal grant application.
Meetings that I've attended and the presentations that have been made on the extension of County Road 24 to Trunk Highway 11, I believe that there are at least three, maybe four options of taking that from County Road 24 and bringing it north to Trunk Highway 11. And I don't know that they're, I don't know that they've come down to one. I think your question about where would it come out, I guess, to say that it's coming out near Rainy Lake One Stop, I think is, I don't know, it seems to me a misnomer because I think they've also looked at it coming out what was known as, and I can't remember the county road number, the K O A road, that that might be an option there or somewhere in between the two. And so I think if I heard your argument, Counselor Droba, correctly, you're saying that we ought to, in our letter of support, prioritize the overpass versus the extension of the road, County Road 24 to Trunk Highway 11.
That would, that's what, how I understood it from the people that I spoke with, that that is the major concern that they have is being stopped by the train coming back into town. And again, if we have emergency services that have to go out past that railroad tracks, if you don't know if the train is there or not, you get to the train, you have to go all the way around to get back to the other side if we were to extend out that road. So it just seems like that would make the most sense to prioritize it from a city perspective based off of emergency services usage.
And I agree with you, but I don't know if it needs to be in this particular, I think it's early to be putting those kinds of parameters into just a letter of support for funding, is my sense on it.
I understand what you're saying, but if it's not, if we're not writing a letter of support based off of what city services would be used, then why are we writing a letter of support in any capacity? I mean, we need to look at it based off of what helps the city and the city's needs is to be able to get emergency services to those people. We have no benefit to extending out 24 outside of the city. And that's my concerns. I understand what you're saying, but from a city perspective, it makes the most sense to put in the overpass first. And if there's additional funds, then obviously extend out 24. I'm all for writing a letter of support, I'm just saying what I've heard from other people.
Chief Manasa, did you have anything that you wanted to state with regard to this subject?
To, I guess, kind of commend them. Talked about whether we're knowing their, talked about is making that information. Here, but closed circuit television, in lack of a better term, crossing at Van Lynn to both the firehouse dispatch and the dispatch with those dispatch criteria and options on how we. As overpass or extension of the road, if we only had to pick one, I think I could argue both ways, but. Why I've been approached, obviously, is the ambulance service and the fire. But also. So to speak, hopefully that gains a little, that's the criteria, you know. Return, I know we've been held up by trains and providing ambulance service to people. We talked about the road access at times. Talked about stuff like this in emergency man. Multi-railment, i.e. upright, but off of the tracks, that very much limits our access on that road. So I mean, small incident could limit our. Something is better than nothing, which road is most appropriate? But letter of support for both items would be.
Thank you. Councilor Droba, are you considering an amendment to the motion with regard to priority?
Yeah, I would make an amendment to the motion that the city looks at, or the city supports the overpass first, I guess.
Have a motion by Councilor Droba to amend the motion to have a letter of support, but that the overpass, that item would have a priority because of services from the city, emergency services.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
If someone seconded.
I was going to say, does that restrict, does that say that we don't support the other one?
No, no, I think it just. That we would see a priority with that one because of the need for emergency services.
Someone have a problem with that. I think I can support it either way. The county, the county board is going to determine which is going to be the way it's going to go. Because it was my understanding under this program, they're trying to do it, they score all the options and they're going to go the one that gets the highest score anyway, because that's going to give them the best shot to get the money. And I don't want to restrict it, you know, I'm okay going either way. They'll make the determination what the people want and how they're going to do it.
I'll need a second.
We need a second of the motion to amend.
All seconded. And, you know, I mean, I think that it really doesn't, to prioritize this in the letter of support isn't going to have much effect anyway. I don't think, I don't want to weaken our support by, you know, that's the one thing I, and if we word it in such a way that it just is, as practice, it's not going to have much effect because they're going to be looking at an analysis. So basically, I think your suggestion is a concern, but I don't think it really active in a letter of support anyway. And for further review and discussion, as Counselor Briggs said to the county board, and show up there, maybe.
I think the wording can certainly be something that we strongly support both options, but that from a emergency services standpoint, we would see the overpass maybe having somewhat of a priority. Chief Manasa?
I'm not saying. Asking for both, aren't they?
And/or.
Is that what they're going for, is both?
Going for both. So we would strongly support both.
The wording that we have in our packet, because I haven't had an opportunity to see the letter we're sending, because we haven't written the letter we're sending, is and/or extending the east end. So that's where my concern is, is to get federal grants funds to construct a potential overpass and/or extend the east end of County Road 24. So that and/or. So, that and/or is what concerns me, and I think we should really be looking at the overpass as a first option.
Mr. Mayor.
City Administrator.
Did ask for support to do both projects, but it, you know, again, it's a factor of, or option of whether or not they get funding to do both, what, how the scoring and the points apply, all that would be a factor in that, but they want to do both projects and they're looking for a letter of support. Obstacles on the rail line that don't allow us to.
A further discussion with regard to the amendment, then, to support both options, but give priority to the overpass due to emergency services. Further discussion? Who voted on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment, I guess, I'll call a question on the amendment.
Aye.
Aye.
I would vote yes, motion is carried. And then, we would have the, on the main motion. Question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I would vote yes, motion is carried, and a letter of support will be written. Thank you. Item number eight under New Business is a resolution approving the 2018 wage and benefit adjustment for non-union personnel, as recommended by the Budget and Finance Committee. And the resolution before us is a 2% increase in wages for non-union exempt staff retroactive to January 1, 2018. Further, that it would be, the necessary OSHA-required safety clothing and equipment, and to pay health insurance costs for the family coverage up to $1,200 per month, per employee, retroactive to January 1 of 2018. Your pleasure with that resolution. I guess I would ask the members of the Budget, the Human Resources Committee.
Why, this came out of Budget and Finance.
Well, but I think you discussed it further, I think.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to provide some additional information. Thank you. The draft resolution that was in the packet, Mary stated that we'd be paying the health insurance cost for family coverage. After we had a conversation about the specific impacts on individual employees with the HR Committee and meeting that they had this afternoon, we've modified that language to say that we will pay health insurance costs for family coverage up to a cap of $1,200 per month, per employee, retroactive to January 1, 2018. And that corresponds to the same language that we have in our labor agreements with the firefighters and paramedics, our police department, and our Public Works Department employees. So, it puts a cap on the language that was drafted more generally in the packet on Friday.
I would like a motion.
Break the motion, so that you have one on the cap, one on the, one on the OSHA, rather than linking them all together.
I think, is there a value? I guess, I'm trying to understand.
Because we've had separate discussion on one of the items, I don't know.
Mr. Mayor, I'd recommend that the council just take action on the one resolution, and as part of the, it's asking for the council to approve all three of those, and actually there would be no other changes to the existing 2012 salary employee benefits policy. So, if somebody has a concern with approving all three of those, it's acted on as, acted as an addition today.
Council's pleasure. Motion by Councilor Briggs to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Taken by Councilor Jacksa, and that would include the increase in wages, the required safety clothing and equipment, and the health insurance cap to $1,200. Discussion. Question?
Aye.
Aye.
We vote yes, motion is carried, resolution adopted, and the wage adjustments and salary benefits increases approved. Thank you. Item number nine is to consider the Human Resource Committee recommendations on change of hours in the Administration Department. Councilor Jacksa.
The Human Resource Committee is recommending, and I'll make a motion to that effect, that we do a trial period of Friday of revised work schedules in the Administration Office from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Monday through Thursday, with an hour for lunch. And on Fridays, we would have hours from 7:00 to 12:00. So, we would get the 40 hours in within a shortened work week. And this would be a trial period that would end, begin on August 1, or begin as early as we can in August, and end in October, during which time we would assess the efficacy of that schedule. That's a long motion, but.
Accept your motion. As I understand it, would be a change in office hours in the Administration Department, Monday through Thursday, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and then on Fridays, 7:00 a.m. to noon.
Right. Second.
Taken by Councilor Briggs. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
City Administrator.
Just a clarification about the effective date for that, I think we indicated that it would run through the month of October. There was a little bit of uncertainty on staff level, and some of the staff have had to start it as soon as tomorrow. I would think it's more appropriate that we, we could wait till August 1, although it's in the middle of the month, or middle of the week. Perhaps a start date of Monday, after we have an opportunity to have the newspaper out to the public, we can put something on our webpage, as well as Facebook, and put notices up on the bulletin board and the doors, so at least the public has a little bit of advance notice about the effective date, so.
What date is that, July 30?
Well, Monday would be the 23rd of.
Oh, that, okay.
I know that the Human Resources Committee, I'll create one and try and get it started relatively quickly, so we had more time to see how well it was received and see if there was any compromise services or anything, so. We suggest a date of the 23rd.
I'll take that as a friendly amendment from the.
Maker of the motion sets July 23 through October.
31st, or the last period ending, or?
Doesn't affect payroll, as I just heard the story, so it doesn't matter.
31st is a Wednesday. Friday, a full week, it would be the 26th, about through the month of October.
July 23 through October 26, very good.
That's good.
Okay, further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Drowba.
I just want to really thank staff for trying to get us doing this as soon as possible in the summer, so we have more weeks to be able to see how this works out. I see committed employees when you hear that we want to take Fridays off early from here on out, so that's great.
Well, I think staff is dedicated to making sure that there's service for folks, but Friday afternoons have been fairly quiet, and so I think it's.
And they have done a headcount on that, too, watching to see, just like everybody else, they're taking Fridays off.
A further discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion is carried, and change in office hours is approved. Thank you, for a trial basis. Anything further under New Business? Move to reports of boards, committees, department heads, city administrator.
I have no report, Mr. Mayor. Well, I take that back, I'm sorry, I did want to advise the council that we did our testing in June at City Beach and Rainier Beach, and I say "we," the Department of Public Health for Coochin County does the tests, and then sends them to PACE laboratories down in Virginia, and the city of Rainier, the city of International Falls pays for our water testing, and both of them were well within swimmable limits, they were very low for fecal coliform, so. And we do that on a monthly basis in June, July, and August, just to make sure that the beaches are safe. Their public health department is supposed to be coordinating with Canada, who is also gonna be doing testing of their beach area once a month, so we're kind of dovetailing on each other's test to make sure that they're safe on both sides of the lake and the river.
Relay that information to Fort Francis Administration?
Yes, that's what Derek Foss and the Public Health Department's been.
Good news, thank you. Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been working with the city administrator on the annexation, and we'll get the corrected legal descriptions for annexation at the next meeting, and then also we'll get the paperwork to move forward on those three blighted properties that were not responded to the prior letter. That's all I have.
Thank you. Chief Maston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I might report for the police department, in fact, it. This past month, in de-escalation strategies for persons with mental illness or behavioral disorder, all received by the officers, it was presented by the Upper Midwest Community Policing Institute. It moved forward, so, a good training session. We have some activity with our, out of the area, conducting operations. Towards our activity, we had 588 calls for service, and that broken down to 29 citations, 27 medical calls, we had 36 arrests, and we generated. I would bring to your attention the number of traffic stops, 224 for the month of June, which is substantially higher than it has been in years past. And with that, you know, I know you've received some traffic complaints, as have I, and so we've addressed those. Effective in 47th Street, where you had mentioned, we used our radar trailer, cops are out there making a lot of contacts, trying to answer. Majority, you'll see when you go through my report, the majority of the cops are educational, warning stops, we're not, we only enrolled 29 tickets, I believe it was, and they're making the contacts. Real well. And again, I included in your packet how all of the calls for service and reports were broken down.
Great report, thank you, and thank you for your response to those traffic areas. I know summertime, everybody moves a little bit faster, and citizens do get concerned about that. Questions for Chief Maston? Great work on the drugs, pleased that the task force is working out well. Chief Manassas.
Report for the fire in EMS for the month of June, we had seven fire department callouts, five of them were city responses, which included a commercial fire alarm, residential alarm, propane leak, a natural gas leak, and a downed power line. We also had two rural fire responses, which included a motor vehicle accident and a grass fire, one CO alarm, one investigation of a smell of gas, and one CN train fill. Our monthly meeting we had on the 21st of June, which consisted of a regular business meeting, a relief meeting, and we were also fortunate enough to have members of the Fort Francis Fire Department over, they went through some gear and some interoperability, use is maybe a strong word, some interoperability points that we can discuss and talk to as departments and work to get a little closer on that. Our training for that month, we did fireworks in preparation for the 4th of July, and we also had kind of a neat deal, we had a ceiling breach machine that was built by the Falls High School, engineering class, I believe is the proper term for it, they had a project they had to do for the semester, they had to do a design build with a local client, they had to make a product, which included an instruction booklet, full detailed description on how it was put together, they had to market it, and they had to sell it. So, we've partnered with the high school in the past, and we saw this as an opportunity to provide them a project and get us a piece of equipment. They did a very nice job on the machine, overall cost for us was $500. If we were to buy this outright on the open market, it would be $5,000 to $6,000, so we feel we did pretty good on this deal, and I think it benefited the school as well. So, very happy to take advantage of that with Mr. Olson over there, and I think it worked out well for him. One other note on the fire department monthly report, Rural Fire, RFPA, has a new office manager, Dana Harchie. She's been in contact with me over the last couple months, and I've also provided her with fire reports, monthly fire reports. I haven't had the opportunity to join them at a meeting, unfortunately, their meeting nights are the same night as our ambulance meeting nights, so it's hard for me to attend both meetings. I may in the future be able to attend their meeting and come back for the training for the ambulance, but up until now, I've been unable to attend, but working with her has been very good, a little transparency in our system, and I think they're appreciative of it, and they've been very good to work with in lieu of that. So, some good contacts being made there, and very happy with that. Ambulance for the month of June, we had 6911 calls, 47 transfers, for a total of 107 runs, compared to 2017's 121 runs in June, so we're down just a little bit in June. Total runs for the year were up to 702 for a total, that's 280 transfers and 422 911 calls. And we had our monthly meeting and training on the 13th of June, which consisted of a regular business meeting, and then a discussion on our new shift rotation for our trial period. We also kind of introduced a lab tech at that meeting for the live demo, and then we had a follow-up meeting with that on the 27th to kind of see where we're at, and how that was working, and hammer out some bugs we had, and again, as previously reported, I think that's been working out fairly well, and we hope to continue with that.
Good report. Questions for Chief Manassas? Izzy, thank you. Under reports of department heads, building official, and zoning administrator, the second quarter report, Kelly Myers.
Counsel. Twenty. Seventy-seven the year prior, the biggest thing that you'll notice in the charts is the increase in the permit fees, which is a reflection on our increases this year. It's been receptive very well, I haven't had the complaints or anything on the order of that, we're basically in line with everyone else, so it's not in question. They do like the flat fee figures that we have for roofing, siding, windows, it's pretty nice for the contractors, they're not any longer doing them on validation, which one contractor may be doing the job cheaper than the other one, so his permit's cheaper, well, it's tough for them to figure, so they kind of like the flat fee, it works out very well. Look at the charts, they're, the third one's a little bit deceiving, because you'll see the decline in July, the only reason for that is because of the quarter ends on June 31st, so that'll come back up next year, or at the next third quarter level for us, so that's why that's there. On the next few pages, we're permit fees by quarter for years, and you can see. One of the things that's needed in the department.
Questions for building inspector and zoning administrator? Very good work, certainly appreciate the good work on the blight that's going on also with you and Chief Manassas. Just a lot of concerns, my citizens out there that want to see neighborhood standards kept up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To reports of the mayor and council committees. Counsel Groban.
So in the last two weeks, I had a really neat learning experience, and it was with Counselor Jacksaw, when we brought in that group to talk about the local video being produced. And I couldn't help but think over and over again that the previous city council meeting, we had moved to put together a dog park and propose it over at Riverside. And Counselor Jacksaw had concerns on if that was the right spot. And I'd like to do, bring in some more people from our community, have a discussion, and start the process over, and see if we can't find the best place. And it may be where I've already looked at with some local people. But maybe make, start over and bring in a town hall meeting, or something to talk about the dog park, say why we want to do it, and see if we can bring in some citizens to have a conversation of where more people would like to see it. And it may end up in the same spot, it may not. But I think I was too quick to judge. But seeing a group of our citizens come in here and have a conversation, and not go the direction that I think Counselor Jacksaw or I really expected it to go, but it ended up being great. I'd really like to start that process over, and we still have plenty of time for next year's budget. So I'd like to maybe propose that we do a town hall meeting. We wouldn't need the entire council there, but just to take some input from citizens on the proposed dog park for next year.
All right. So you want to propose a date or time, so that we can have that advertised?
Sure. We were discussing a public works meeting on the first, or, first, I think August 2nd would work for me. And like I said, we wouldn't need the entire council there. It would just be more of an informational back and forth. Not a, not a public hearing, but just an informational meeting.
Thinking of afternoon, or evening, or what time of day?
Maybe 5 o'clock that evening, to get people after, after work, if they want to come in.
And a special invitation?
Maybe a pause and clause in the Humane Society.
Oh, Ken, could you make, get an invitation out to those two? August 2nd?
August 2nd. It's a Thursday. 5:00 p.m.
I know I'm out of town that evening.
Probably air-conditioned.
All right. Town meeting on Dog Park, August 2nd, 5:00 p.m., city council chambers. Thank you. Further on reports of the council committees, boards and commissions. I would share with you that James Ason of the Soil and Water Conservation District had made an application for the city of International Falls. He and I had discussed the possibility of securing some monies for managing ash, the Emerald Ash Borer. And we got many ash trees in our community, and so there was state monies to, from the Shade Tree Advisory Committee that was available. He did make an application for us, on behalf of the city. There was 100 applications received. Ours was not one of those that was chosen. And they did something less than 15 are going to be funded. So, very small number. So hopefully we will continue to work on that in the future. And then, lastly, on the mayor's report, I'd just like to thank all of the street park department employees, the summer employees, our city electrician, Chief Maston in the police department, Chief Manassa in the fire and ambulance department, partners in the July 4th celebration, the Rotary Club, Veterans of Foreign Wars, and the Elks Lodge, contributions of many businesses, like Packaging Corporation of America. I think it really, all of that came together to make a, and we had perfect weather for a very successful July 4th celebration. So thank you to everyone for all of your efforts in that. And advertising by the radio station and the newspaper. Very helpful. Further, under council committees, boards and commissions. Anyone in the audience that wishes to bring something to the attention of the council at this time?
I'd just like to offer a reminder to the council and the public that on Tuesday, August 7, from 4 to 7, the police department and the Community Wellness Action Council will be sponsoring the National Night Out again at Smokey Bear Park. It was very well-attended last year, and I just wanted to get that reminder out there, that we'll be having the same event on Tuesday, August 7, from 4 to 7. And we do have a city council meeting on the 6th, but the following night will be when National Night Out.
That was a terrific night last year. Just a lot of activities, from law enforcement to all of the agencies in the community. And thank you for the leadership of the police department and the, and your, and I can never remember the acronym for that one.
CWA, it's a model, Community Wellness Action Council, but the police department and other law enforcement agencies have really done a good job in making it a bigger event. And I think it was very well-reached effort on the part of the city, and...
Thank you. There's nothing further to come before the council. We would adjourn this meeting, and our next city council meeting will be Monday, August 6, at 4:30 p.m. Following this meeting, we will have the International Falls Economic Development Authority meeting. And so I will adjourn this meeting.